And we will call this meeting to order. If you would please rise. Mayor Pro Tem, Trader Volitas, and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Avril, can you call our first?
Yeah. Chancellor Lorenz?
Here.
Chancellor Schleibach?
Here.
Chancellor Martinez?
Here.
Chancellor Trader?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here. Okay. Approval of the consent agenda.
We move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Uh, sorry. Second, who made the motion? Thank you. Uh, Chancellor Schleibach?
Aye.
Chancellor Martinez?
Aye.
Chancellor Trader?
Aye.
Chancellor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
Hang on. I just realized that Avril, you pulled up March 2nd's agenda. Because I was like, haven't we done all of this already? Hang on. Do you have this? Um, okay. Next item on the agenda is, uh, proclamations, communications, and appointments. Um, in your packet, you have a resignation letter from Lori E. Barondo and the Theater Board. Which is a council.
I make a motion to accept her letter of resignation with regret.
Take it.
Any other discussion?
All right. Chancellor Martinez?
Aye.
Chancellor Trader?
Aye.
Chancellor Lorenz?
Aye.
Chancellor Schleibach?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Okay. We have citizens' comments and speech, special presentations. We have our audit by Logan and Associates.
Well, good evening. My name's Kyle Logan. I'm the owner of Logan and Associates, the city's audit firm. And I'm here to present the results of our audit of the city's financial statements for the year ended December 31st, 2016. And so, um, you have two documents in front of you. One is the financial statements, the thick one. And then the other document is the, what I refer to as a management letter. So I'll talk a little bit about the audit and the financial statements first, and then I'll, I'll cover the management letter. And so, um, you know, state statute requires that all local governments in the state of Colorado have an audit by an independent CPA firm. So you, the city council, hired our firm to perform that. And our audit process was basically two parts. We came out in the early part of January and did some preliminary work, where at that point, we, we do a lot of, of testing of transactions. So we pick samples of checks that are written, samples of payroll transactions, samples of utility billings, and verify that, you know, one, is there support for all those transactions? And are the policies and procedures that the city has put in place being followed? And so, we, we do that. We also do some, what we call analytical. So we kind of look at, even though it was after the new year started, we looked at the December balances to say, hey, do things look, look out of ordinary? And I know you guys were in, in between finance directors. And so, the interim finance director and I sat down and the city manager, and we went through a few things. And so, so it kind of allowed them time to then get some things adjusted. So that when we came out, um, in April to do the final year-end audit, then everything was adjusted. Okay? And so, the final year-end, um, you know, we came out for a week. And that's where we really get into the, the numbers and all the disclosures in this document. And, you know, we verify a lot, third-party confirmations. Um, for instance, send, we send confirmations to banks to verify that the cash balances that the city has on their books is what the bank says. You know, we also verify a lot of the debt with the different organizations that, that holds the debt. And we also verify a lot of your revenue stream, like your sales taxes and property taxes, um, with these third parties. Because then that kind of helps give us comfort in order to issue our opinion on the financial statements. Now, if you have this document sitting beside the 2015 document, you'll notice it's a little thick. That's because this year, the city spent over $750,000 in federal warrants. And so that requires an additional, more compliance-type audit that we refer to as a single audit. And so, going through that process, you know, you guys got, you had the two, two big projects, the airport project and then the sewer treatment expansion project, which is still ongoing. And, um, different funding sources for those. Okay? And so, so in doing that, you know, there's certain compliance requirements that the city has to follow in order to comply with these federal regulations. Okay? So we picked, again, picked samples of the transactions. We talked, and in this case, we, we talked with, with Rob about the, the procedures to making sure that, you know, everything, all the expenditures were being reported properly with the appropriate organizations that pass the money through to the city. And in doing that, we did come up with one, one compliance issue, but it wasn't significant enough for us to change our opinion on anything. But it was related to what they referred to as suspension and debarment, meaning that one of the contractors, um, had not been suspended or debarred from doing work on a federal program. And there are certain procedures that the feds require that, you know, you verify, you either get them to certify to you that they haven't been, or there's actually a federal website that, that lists parties that have been debarred from doing federal programs. So, you know, the, the, I say it wasn't a big issue because on two of your large contractors, everything was done perfect. We didn't have any issues with that. It was just, uh, the one related to the engineering firm. And I think possibly, you know, that's more early in the stages and maybe they just didn't have all the, all the ducks in a row. So we've communicated that with, with staff and so that they can put things in place for future. Because when you get these federal programs, you want to make sure that, you know, everything's in place so, so there's no issues. Okay? And so, that being said, though, um, you know, all the expenditures were appropriate and allocated and reported correctly. And so, so that starts, I believe that section starts on page 34 in the financials. And so, it's, it's several pages, or actually, I'm, got my numbers, 43, not 34. And so, the schedule of expenditures of federal warrants, that is, is a summary of the types of, of program expenditures you had. So as you can see, you know, the total is two, two and a half million dollars approximately. Um, and again, you can see, you know, the airport program. But now, the sewer expansion project is, is, the funding comes from two different sources. So that, the Bureau of Land Management is part of it, and then the, the EPA is part of it. Okay? So you have two buckets of money where that is helping fund that project. And so, then, you know, the, the main thing I'm here to tell you is that, you know, what's our opinion on the financials? And that is following the table of contents, the independent auditor's report. And on page B, at the, uh, the top of page B, is our opinion paragraph. And so, for the year ended December 31st, 2016, that, uh, the city's financial statements are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles for a local government. And our opinion on that is an unmodified opinion. What that means is it's a clean opinion. So that's the best that a local government can receive from an audit firm. What does that tell you as a board or as a council? That tells you that everything in this document, the, the management's discussion and analysis, the footnotes, all the numbers in this document are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and are fairly stated at the year ended December 31st, 2016. So, there's a lot of things that go into that. That means that, you know, your policies and procedures that have been established by you guys and your predecessors over the years are in place. And, and so that the financial reporting is accurate. Okay? So that's, that's on the financial statements. Any questions? I know I just kind of did a high level. If you want any more detail, I can address it. Um, even after tonight, if you're looking through it and digesting it and have some questions, please let Heather know and she can get ahold of me. Be happy to answer any questions on, on the financial statements. Okay? So then, the next document is the management letter. And our professional standards require us to communicate certain things to you, the city council who governs the city. And so, that's what this first page is about. Tells you our responsibilities under our auditing standards. And then on page two, we talked, at the top there, we talk about the federal programs. And so, that second paragraph, federal warrants compliance, this here is, is talking about the suspension and debarment finding that we had. Again, um, it wasn't significant enough that it would change our opinion on your financial statements. It's just more of, I think, a procedural thing that, that maybe fell through the cracks during the process. Okay? Um, and, and the reason I say that is, again, because your large contractors, they had all the proper paperwork and everything in place, so. And then following that, you know, it talks about accounting estimates, if there were significant estimates that were made. Um, significant accounting policies. Well, this year, there were no changes in, in the accounting policies that the, that the city operates under. And then on the next page, significant audit adjustments. We had some audit adjustments, um, but nothing, again, significant enough for us to change our opinion on the financial statements. You know, if there were issues that we, or disagreements during the audit, you know, had there been, you would have heard from me before tonight. So, so you know, that's, put your mind at ease there. Now, down under, other information, um, you know, in our samples, we picked credit card transactions. Because this, um, we auditors look at credit card transactions because that's where a lot of risk is, um, uh, just because of how, how easy they are to use. And so, so again, when we pick these transactions, we say, okay, when the city gets the bill, are they paying from the bill? Or are they verifying that all the receipts support the bill before they pay it? And in some cases, you know, it, it, it wasn't a significant amount, but in some cases, there were missing receipts. Um, at times, they were, it was documented, yep, didn't have this receipt on the bill. But, um, but you know, that's one thing that the department heads are required to basically review all their, their employees under them to make sure that they have the, the appropriate receipts. Um, in a few, in a few instances, there were some over-the-limit fees charged because for whatever reason, um, that credit card went over the limit that was allowed. And so, you know, I think in those cases, there were some, some significant purchases made that was, got maybe a timing issue of between the, the cutoff date for the billing period. Um, so again, you know, nothing significant enough that would really concern us, but something that we thought we ought to bring up because, you know, we had a similar comment last year. And so, that's why, you know, I brought it up again this year to, hey, continue, continue to monitor that. And then on page four, um, you know, we have a comment about the inventory. Now, the city has inventory that they record on their books for the water and sewer funds. And, and so, we pick a sample of those to verify, okay, are, are the quantities and the cost associated with them being reported appropriately? Well, in some cases, and I think this may be part of the turnover that happened throughout the year, is that, um, some of the more current purchase prices on some of these didn't get assigned. And so, it's, they weren't significant amounts. You know, we may be talking a few dollars per item between the old cost that was reported and the new cost. And so, again, it wasn't significant enough that we felt the inventory was grossly over or understated. But it's one of those things that we say, hey, you know, take a look at this. We've discussed with city staff to, hey, take a look at this to make sure that, you know, maybe you changed the way you're pricing it or something like that. So, again, um, those really were the only two, two items that, that we had. And so, as I mentioned before, that tells you, as a city council, that the policies and procedures that you have put in place are being followed by your staff. And so, you know, that also equates to a clean opinion on the financial statements. So, um, and last, you know, I want to thank Heather and Rob for their work. Now, Heather came in kind of new to all this, so. And I also want to thank Debbie Phillips, you know, the interim person. She, she really helped out a lot too as well. So, um, you know, we, we appreciate their help because it makes our job a lot easier as far as going through the process and doing an efficient and timely audit. So, and that's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Citizens' comments. Um, city council welcomes any unscheduled comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Um, we ask that you come forward to the podium and just state your name for the, the video. And, um, please keep in mind, we cannot make any action on any comments this evening. Gary?
Good evening. Again. I'm back, actually, I wasn't planning on being here or I would have been on the agenda, but I was going to the school board to arrange for the second bus. And I haven't heard anything back about it from people organizing the event, KidVenture. So I had to assume they didn't need an extra bus. So, I'm here, but I had to, had just come in. I want to talk just very briefly about the, um, the picnic, 4th of July. And I ran out of these. So, this is just kind of a, a prototype anyhow of flyer. Um, spoke at some length earlier today with, with Jaime Hurtado regarding, uh, timing, uh, facilities, uh, the whole structure and what might work better. Uh, he's a wealth of information in that regard and was very helpful. Uh, one of the things we decided, I think some of those flyers say 4th of July. The later ones say Independence Day because the final analysis was to do this on Saturday instead of Tuesday. Lot going on on Tuesday, a lot of people out of town. Uh, consensus, at least in our discussion, was to, uh, make it on Saturday. And I, I'm believing that will still work out. We just need to get some exposure out. Actually brought the ball with me and left it in the car because I was running late, but it's out here. Jaime had never seen anything like that before. So it's, it's kind of huge, kind of lightweight. And the idea is, I don't know if I mentioned this before, but it came from, uh, basically inner-city Chicago. It's where the mush ball or the, this particular 16-inch game ball came from, uh, dating back to times when they wanted to play ball, but all they had was abandoned lots. And so they couldn't hit it very far, and that's where all that came from. They could just, uh, just feel free to do whatever, and they wouldn't hit it out of the area. It also, but it's turned into, uh, nationally even, they have a, a league and rules and it's... The whole idea is that it's, it's a, it's an increased participation sport because of some rules that are set in place. And it's designed for old and young. It's, for lack of a better comparison, I come up with like the difference between tennis and whatever this new, um, pickleball. Haven't heard much about that lately, but I'm not even sure what that is. But it's, it seems to relate somewhat. So that's the idea behind that. The rest of that that's on the flyer, um, the Rio Grande Prevention Partners and their, uh, subcommittee of communities that care has agreed to participate in the thing, or I guess we can call it participating, but really we're raising awareness of that organization. As well as, uh, Uriana's, Uriana Costas' plight to raise transportation and residential funds, uh, which has been in the news a lot lately, but there's still funds needed. So we want to raise awareness of that. So there's a, a number of different avenues we're pursuing. Um, fireworks is out. I understand, and I'm not surprised about that, how that worked out. There's obviously a lot to do with that, and we'll, we'll talk about that for next year. Having said all that, Neighborhood Watch has the budget for the food, and we're inviting people to bring in additional if they like, but they don't have to. Uh, there's no charge for the event. We just want to get the community together. All we need is four to $500 worth of, of promotion, which would be flyers, banners, posters, and that kind of thing, that I would respectfully request some help from the city council with. And obviously, this, since we didn't get on the agenda, we'll just leave that alone. But if that's, if that, at least, if you have some discussion about that, I'd be glad to answer any other questions. But that's really about all I wanted to communicate. Wanted to let you know that the event is still on. We've expanded things a little bit. It was extremely helpful talking to Jaime. And, so he's got, we don't really need much in a way of equipment. Some bases and some bats, that's about it. The game does not require gloves. In fact, they're against the national rules. But, in any case, that's kind of an overview and a whole idea. So, I'll leave you with that and hopefully get some positive discussion about some promotional. That's really all we need help with at this point. So, do you have any questions? Still sound like a good idea? Come on, a little, little help here. We're believing that it is, and hopefully there'll be enough people left in town if we do it on that Saturday. Um, Jaime, for instance, was talking about a, it sounds like a pretty substantial event that they're doing in center on the 4th. And, so we're, we're believing that this will work out. We'd like to see it get going as a first annual event and something that'll continue. So, thank you for your time. And you know where I am if you need, if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else this evening? Moving on to contracts, agreements, and leases. Um, we have a memorandum of understanding between Rio Grande County Public Health and the City of Monavista for use of Sky High for emergency operations and approval of strategic goals. Which is a council?
Mayor? Rob said that the strategic goals won't be at this time. It's just, um, the operations.
Oh, just the use of the building?
Yeah.
Okay. So do we have a motion to approve the MOU between the city and Rio Grande County Public Health for use of Sky High for emergency operations?
So moved.
Servant.
Um, Chancellor Trader?
Aye.
Chancellor Lorenz?
Aye.
Chancellor Schleibach?
Aye.
Chancellor Martinez?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Uh, motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to staff reports. Courtney, do you have anything you'd like to report?
Yeah.
On the city manager's report?
Um, there is the letter from, about the ready grant. Um, I'll just read that. Says, um, it's from Jordi Wisdom. This is council. Several weeks ago, I presented to you that the county was applying for a rural economic development initiative, a ready grant, with GOCO, and asked for a letter of support in that effort. The grant was to fund an engineering study to determine what measures were necessary to have the ability to operate the Veterans Waste Water Facility year-round. On June 13th, Ronnie Wisdom asked if the council would be interested as serving as lead for this grant. GOCO believes that the, that as the county has applied for two ready grants, that they should prioritize which one is a larger priority. But Kristy Doan, Doa, felt that if Monavista would represent one of the two grants, then both grants stood a good chance of being awarded. The ready grant has been applied for, and the approval date is scheduled for July 1st, 2017. The grant is for $50,000 and breaks down as follows. $30,000 for the Doa ready funds and $20,000 for the Alpomar, Outcall Foundation as matching funds. Ronnie confirmed that they have secured the matching funds, so there would be no out-of-pocket cost to the city for becoming the lead on this project. If council would like to serve as the lead for this grant, someone please make a motion to approve Monavista to become the lead in the ready grant application process. Thank you.
And I, and it's my understanding, the reason for that request is there would be then two competing grants within the county, so they're wanting to move one out of the county. Which is a council?
We don't have any grants in the works right now.
Not a good call.
Motion that we take the lead for the ready grant?
Servant. Any other discussion?
Chancellor Schleibach?
Aye.
Chancellor, um, Trader?
Aye.
Chancellor Martinez?
Aye.
Chancellor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you.
Um, and then the last thing was, um, we got a thank you card from the dirt drags that happened this past weekend.
And that is it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney.
Chief Foulkes?
I have the May report for the month of May. Um, we had four reported burglaries, 12 reported thefts, three drug cases, and 198 citations issued and 113 reports taken. The citations went up just because we had a lot of a clickety-clackety and DUI enforcement going on. Um, if you look on the CSP report, there was 798 or so traffic contacts. We had a lot of traffic contacts. Um, 1,800 calls for service. Um, so overall, it was a busy month for the department. Have three officers that are currently in backgrounds for state patrol. And, we tried to hire a couple officers who fill in some vacancies. We sent out seven letters for applicants to come test. We only had two that showed up. So it's been hard to attract people. Community policing officer Pino's been doing some community policing. He's going to start the summertime cooldown. Um, so he's been working on that. Um, we helped the OX Lodges with their bicycle rodeo. Had a bunch of kids that came out and they got bicycles and helmets. Like I mentioned, we had a DUI enforcement campaign and a clickety-clackety in May. No major incidents for Memorial Day. We have another enforcement period coming up in June. And then, one other clickety-clackety in July. Just found out that I had, we got $1,200 for DUI enforcement for 2017, 2018. And, totally had 400, or 400, uh, four DUIs for the month. So, as all, as all of you might know already, that I applied for Alamoosa. I accepted a position with, uh, the police department down at US Patrol. It's been a rough year for me. Can honestly say that. Can honestly say that. Anyways, my last day's going to be June 28th, and pretty much it unless you guys got questions.
Well, we appreciate your time and support this year.
I mean, overall, my, my time here has been pretty enjoyable, except for the last year. 15 years of it's been fun. I think it's my best interest for now.
Well, that's it. You gotta, you gotta always look out for you and what's best for you and your family, and that's a priority.
Yeah.
You certainly understand that.
But anyways, I'll still be in the community. I'll still be on the fire department and ambulance, so I'll be up and running around, so.
We were hoping we couldn't get rid of you that easily. We're glad you're sticking around for us.
But, I mean, I thought I could leave in bad standing, didn't have to make that, so. Anyways, I enjoyed working with you all, and I learned a lot from everybody. I made a lot of friends. It's just that time, I guess. Thank you.
You.
Mayor, council. You have my written report before you. I'll be brief and just go over the largest item on here. A year ago, IT came to help out with a major crisis you were having with viruses on your network. A year later, you were attacked again very heavily through a large virus called WannaCry virus. Your people did fabulous. There's no amount of networking and prevention that IT can do that substitutes for your people understanding what, how they could possibly catch a virus, paying attention to the warnings that are sent out, and they did admirable on this. Outstanding. You had no penetrations into your network, I'm happy to say. Your backups, your firewall, everything performed better than expected. So, the entire staff should be commended for the appropriate response that they performed in this last attack. So, big difference from a year ago. Today, they're really doing well, and they've listened, they've performed well, and I think they all deserve a round of applause, quite frankly. But other than that, you have my written report for you, and that's really it for my tea tonight. Any questions for me?
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is, do we have a motion to go into executive session? Oh, sorry, council report, sorry. Just like, skip over everybody. Jason?
Just as a follow-up on our budget work session we had the other night, I'd like to make a motion now that we put a moratorium on any capital purchases without prior approval of council for the remainder of the year. Second.
Any other discussion? Ezra?
Just a second, sorry. Wait a second.
Sure.
My apologies.
We both seconded, so.
Okay. And just to clarify the language, moratorium on capital purchases?
For the remainder of the year without council approval.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Trader?
Aye.
Counselor Martinez?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Schlebo?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you for that.
That's it.
Okay.
We had the Upper Grand, Rio Grande, Upper Rio Grande Economic Development Coalition, said that five times asked, meeting on Tuesday morning. I was a, generally we bring in a guest speaker to talk a little bit from the various entities around the valley and what they're trying to accomplish. This time, however, it was Marty Aspen, who is the director, who kind of gave a rundown of things that we're looking at doing in the next year. And it was actually quite interesting to see exactly where we're headed and what we're looking at for the next year. If I can get this pulled up. One of the big things is that we've had some resistance outside of the 160 corridor to the, to the agreement that we're all signing towards economic development to work together as a valley entity versus individual communities. And what this was being viewed as by some of these outside entities was that this is a 160 thing where Alamosa, Montavista's telling everybody else what to do. Now, that has been worked, we've had some conversations with people, and I'm happy to say that the reception and the perception has changed a lot because we've started talking about, this is not just to benefit the 160 corridor, this is to benefit the valley. We're here to work together. And so, San Luis Economic Development Group has signed on. There's a number of conversations going on with San Luis, Lahara, Castilla County, Caneos County. There's a lot of really good, positive communication coming out of that. Swatch, both city and county have signed on. So it's, there's, all of a sudden, there's a lot of positivity surrounding this agreement, and I think it's, we're starting to see that, the negative perception that had come from that disappear into becoming more positive result. Also, one of the big ones is developing internships with Adam State and TSJC. That was a huge one that they're looking at. And so, if you know of any businesses that are looking for, to develop somebody, I mean, they get pretty minimal amount of money paid to the intern, if any. In exchange, they're expected to kind of develop this intern a little bit. So that, I believe, is going to be a huge economic development, economic boost for the community, both at the college and the businesses in general. And just a lot of, what was said about tourism expansion, and one of the things that was brought up was Senator Crowder was there, and Highway 160 trying to, between 285 and Highway 160, trying to stop traffic from getting completely clogged up on some of these highways, and that infrastructure's a big issue as we continue to see increased tourism in the area. So, he obviously talked about taper, about the budget restrictions, and how that is very difficult to make some of those decisions. But he did say that they do want to push to provide some better infrastructure here in the San Luis Valley. And that's all that's got.
Thank you. I do not have anything this evening, so. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
I move to go into executive session for discussion of a personnel matter under CRS Section 24-6-4022F and not involving any specific employees who have requested discussion of the matter in open session, any member of this body or any elected official, the appointment of any person to fill an office of this body or an elected official, or personnel policies that do not require the discussion of matter personal to particular employees.
I have a motion. Servant. Any other discussion?
Counselor Martinez?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Schlebo?
Aye.
Counselor Trader?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
We'll take a short little recess.